Thank you so much. The time is now five fourteen PM and the April twenty third, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. We're going to move to item one point two, welcome and opening remarks from the committee chair. Good evening and welcome to the Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Jonathan Briggs, Chair and Member of the Board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. Also want to thank you all and apologize, we had to cancel last minute last week because I was not feeling well. So, thank you so much for your patience and for joining this evening and being flexible. We will now have introductions of our committee members, starting with board members, then administration staff, then board office staff, and our board legal counsel. So I'll turn it to our board members that are on the committee first.
Hi, everyone. I am Lolita Walker. I am the Vice Chair of Prince George's County School Board. Excited to be here, a member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Hello, everyone. I'm Juanita Miller, Member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Great. Ms. Rivera Forbes? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move past Ms. Rivera Forbes and move to our administrative staff and then we'll come back to you.
Good evening. I'm Robin Walsh, the Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
I'm Rabel DePietre, Director for the Board Office. I want to thank everyone for joining and watching.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Adeline, Administrative Secretary in the Board Office and Support Staff to the Policy and Governance Committee.
And sorry, Ms. Chair McInnes Murray.
Good evening. I am Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board Ex officia, Member of this committee. Thank you.
Great. And also Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Hi, good evening. Pamela Boozer Struthers, District Three Board of Education Member and just a guest of the meeting tonight. Thanks.
Great. And then we're going to go to Board Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dennis Whitley the Third. I'm a Partner at the Law Office of Shipley and Horn, and we are Board Counsel.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone, for your greetings and we're excited for you all to offer your intellect tonight. So we're going to move to item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. The question is on adopting the April twenty third, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. It is moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The April twenty third, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda is adopted. We're now going to move to item one point four, Approval of the Committee Meeting Minutes. The question is on approving the March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting minutes are approved. We're now going to move on to item two point O, Public Comment on Agenda and None Agenda Items. Registered voters, public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video, audio, or written. There is one registered public comment speaker this evening that is Ms. Tammy Lee. She's an individual speaking on wellness, nutrition, and physical activity. So, Ms. Adeline, if you can let Ms. Tammy Lee in. Right, Ms. Lee, we're so grateful to have you this evening and I'm going to turn it over to you for your testimony.
Thank you so much for having me. Hey, everyone. My name is Tammy Lee. I actually have an incoming PG CPS Kindergartner and I work at the University of Maryland overseeing fitness and well-being. Today, I'm endorsing a comprehensive review of the Wellness, Nutrition, and Physical Activity Policy, along with the Health and Wellness Administration Administrative Procedure. An immense amount of research has taken place in regards to physical activity and wellness and nutrition since two thousand eleven, when this policy was last updated, which is about thirteen years ago now. This policy needs to be reviewed and updated in alignment with the other updated policies and documents, like the Street Strategic Plan, which has several mentions of wellness and well-being in it, along with the Equity Policy, and then other documents like the Climate Change Action Plan and the Blueprint for Maryland's Feature Community Schools Model. Research proves that higher levels of physical activity correlate to improved grades and the ability to focus, also improved memory, better mood, less stress, decreased risk of depression and other mental health concerns, which is certainly concerns with a lot of our parents today. Physical activity is linked to visible changes in the structure of the brain, particularly the size of the hippocampus. And the hippocampus is our primary area of the brain that's utilized in memory and learning. Yet, we continue to decrease the amount of physical activity in our children's school day. We've drastically reduced physical education classes to upwards of only once a week often, and our recess is currently only mandated to be twenty minutes per day. And that's when all research right now shows at least sixty minutes to several hours a day for physical activity is needed for all children six to seventeen years old. And we should also consider how our teachers are training, are being trained to use physical activity in the classroom, because we know that as little as six minutes of high-intensity exercise leads to twenty percent faster learning when that learning occurs directly after physical activity. We also know that that retention of that memory and learning is ten percent better one week after physical activity. So, while we're decreasing the physical activity, we want to make sure that we're going back and looking at the reasons why. We really want to help our children get more activity now, not only to help them be successful in the classroom, but also to build healthy habits for their life, so they can live more well-lives, both physically and mentally. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I think that's our only testimony for today. So, we're going to move to our next portion, but Ms. Lee, thank you so much for providing your testimony this evening and for sharing on that important topic. Okay, we're going to move to item three point O, Legislative Updates, and specifically, item three point one, May Legislative Committee Meeting Update. And I believe, Mrs. Welsh, I'm going to turn it over to you for that update, but your look says perhaps.
No, I'm fine. I can do whatever way, however you want to do it. It's fine with me.
Awesome. Okay, well, I'm going to go and give me and turn it over to you.
Okay. So, the May did provide their update based on what the, what has been that moved forward to the governor. Of course, he's in the process right now of signing bills. So, just because it went to the government governor right now, it doesn't mean that he has actually signed it yet, but I think there's high probability he will probably sign most of the bills. And if you just scroll down, Cindy, I'm just going to highlight a couple of the bills that we had talked about in the past. Keep going. School behavior, no, okay, I think we missed one. The one that had to do with the Blueprint Coordinator, House Bill ten eighty-two, I think it's a few little slide. Okay, keep going. Can you scroll down, please? You should see House Bill. Keep going. Keep going. There you go. Right there it is. So, this bill, one of the big things that had been a big conversation about was who's going to pay the salary of a Blueprint Coordinator for each county. And this does require that each county Board of Education provide a hundred fifty thousand for salary and benefits for the Blueprint Implementation Coordinator. However, actually, state and county governments must pay for the coordinator in the same proportion as the foundation program. So, it was somewhat of a win-win in the sense that it was, it won't be totally the school system covering that cost, but there will be support in covering that cost, as well as, there's supposed to be three point six million in additional annual state and local funding for the salaries. So, they did put the money in there and then each county is required to appoint their implementation coordinator for the, for the next year. But this does terminate FY twenty-six. So, this is really just going to go in effect this July and cover for this upcoming school year, the next school year. And then if you progress to the next one. Keep going. We keep going. Oh, fourteen forty-one. So, this was one that we had opposed because of the extensive, number one, in terms of some of the requirements that they had within there, the costs for the system would have been pretty astronomical, as well as they did lower the standards for the staff and the private providers for the preschool. And our, our department, Division of Academics felt strongly that they should not be lowering the standards for preschool providers. And so, they did do away with a lot, excuse me, a lot of that language. And they did, though, provide, they did go for state funding for leased space and introducing support initiatives, but they also are establishing a career ladder for private pre-kindergarten providers, so that they can be like, either like a teacher, then a lead teacher, and then a person above that, and there's different requirements, but the basic teacher still does not require a bachelor's degree. So, unfortunately, we did not get that increase that we thought that the, we were working to try to get the certification requirements at the same level as teachers in the public schools for pre-K. And then also, oh, the, in twenty-four, twenty-five, private pre-K slots show account for at least ten percent of the county, increasing by ten percent each year. So, by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, ideally, what they're expecting to see is that you'll see preschool slots, fifty percent of the preschool slots will be in the public schools, public education schools, and fifty percent will actually be private slots. So, they'll be sharing both way and money will be going to support also those private school programs. And then, if you can go further, Cindy, and I know we got to talk, actually, I do have to talk fast, don't I? Because we'll be losing Board Member Walker. So, let me just keep scrolling down. We're going to be providing another report, Ms. Board Member Briggs will be providing in the future, so you'll get more details. So, keep, keep going. This one, Senate Bill, I will point out one, if you scroll back up for a second. Senate Bill thirty-three did, that one did pass, and that does, that actually is, it's about providing more opportunities for career-focused students' activity, but it is an unfunded mandate and it will cost the system probably a couple million dollars just to be able to implement that. And just as an FYI, I did provide our fiscal worksheets to our Division of Finance for any of the bills that passed where we had determined that there was an unfunded mandate and it was, there would be additional costs that for the system. So, I know that they are looking at that right now. So, then if you proceed further and keep going. Oh, this one. This, this House Bill twenty twelve eighty-seven was originally about just making sure superintendents had in their contract language that they had to do this training. And actually, what it does, it actually, they expanded it and they said that it requires state superintendent schools, local superintendent schools, chairs and vice-chairs of the State Board, the AIB, and each local board to complete training at least once a year. And so, they are, and they're also encouraging, to the extent, practical training of all members of the local boards, the State Board and AIB principals and senior leadership. And so, and it's supposed to be cohort-based, so that there can be collaboration and you can learn from your fellow people. And if you, can you scroll down, Cindy, because there's a little bit more information in the next slide? And then it talks about what the type of leadership training they're going to provide. And this is in line with Blueprint, but it is pretty extensive in terms of what they are requiring. But quite honestly, when I read through this bill initially, I thought, wow, this is good training for everyone included. So, there's a lot of training related. They did a review of other countries' top-performing education systems and made a determination of what were some of the things that are, are leadership, as well as at the state level, the leadership, and also the state and local boards of ed, the type of training that they need to be provided. So, if you see, there's all the, all the bulleted items or items that need to be in the training. And if you scroll down to the next slide also, Cindy, then there's also more in terms of just like, for example, building instructional leadership teams, implementing career ladders, overseeing teacher induction mentoring systems, recruiting and retaining high-quality diverse school leaders. Just a lot of things that I think are extremely helpful for anyone that wants to be in a leadership position in public education. So, then if you'll scroll down to the next one, Cindy. This one, we had supported, but it's because we already do it. We do actually post electronically any hearings and any bid advertisement. And that one passed. Continue forward. We can continue for that. This one actually delays when the, when the new family medical leave insurance program, which would, they'll be taking money out of everyone's check, but it also provides for leave if, in fact, you have, you know, catastrophic illness, need to be off for extended period of time. But they have extended the time period for that. Continue forward. And this one offers legislative audits, which basically we do, and we did support this, is that when there's an audit that you will, then you will go back in and audit and ensure that what you're doing is publishing the report on your website for any of the findings that you have, as you do, in the third year of that six-year audit cycle. And that, that is important. I last, and when Dr. Goson was here in her last, the last five years where we had the results from, I think it was the two thousand eighteen, nineteen audit from OLA, she tracked, as they did a corrective action plan, and she tracked as we completed each one of the items that had been a finding. And so, this, this is, this is in line with our practice, so we did support it. And then, if you continue forward, this one has to do with, so this was the hot topic about transparency and the, it was House Bill one 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 five and Senate Bill ten twenty-six, and it had to do with transparency and ensuring that, that we, that the county council, as well as just the public, knows what goes into our budgets and, you know, how we're spending money and everything. But there was a provision in there that talked about where if you had, so House Bill one one five, which is the one we were actually supporting, said if you got more than forty percent or more of your funding came from the local, from the county government, then you were not required to have to share with, they get approval from the county government for any transfers from category to category. And actually, this bill, it, when it was amended, they actually took that out. So, we, why we wanted one 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 five was because we actually, at the last count, was something like thirty-one point eight percent of our funding came from county government. So, we realized that we wouldn't have been impacted by it. But as it turned out, they took all that language out in terms of having to get approval for the transfers, and instead, it's more specific to transparency and making sure everyone knows what you're spending your money on. So, proceed further. Cindy, can you scroll down? Thanks. Um, this one was good because for us, and this was something we supported, because it actually gave our county, and we originally had hoped that we would get our, our money for the public, private partnership in fiscal twenty twenty-five. And last year, the legislation said we wouldn't get it to twenty twenty-six. And this year, they did amend the legislation so that we'll actually get it fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is upcoming year. So, that's very exciting. And last year, they had also passed legislation that would do away with the school safety grant program. And this actually, this legislation repeals that, which is really important, because we have, we have bought a lot of things for security in our schools from the school safety grants. So, it's good that we're not losing those grants. Continue forward. Cindy, if you can go forward. I'm going to pass most of the employee relations, because it's all about, really, teacher retention and trying to attract teachers and everything. There was a lot of different programs there, so I'm going to just move forward. Can you go to the next one? We don't need higher ed either, please. Scroll down. What was that one? You just, before student health. Oh, we can move, that, this one's actually positive, because it provides, opens the door to more nurses and we're always looking to make sure we have our nursing positions filled, because they're critical to the operation of our schools. This particular bill, House Bill eighty-six, Senate Bill one eighty, has to do with both the, using the bronchodilators. So, that does cause us to have, that's, that causes us money, because being able to buy the bronchodilators and the medication that goes with it, and then the training that's involved. So, that was one that we had opposed. And if you continue further. This one also, we had opposed, because it talks about the coaches being able to identify that they receive mental health training and then they would identify students who were having mental health problems. And because we have student, we have mental health clinicians, psychologists, professional counselors, social workers, a wide variety of people, very highly trained in that arena. Our feeling was, and I think May felt this way too, is that it really wasn't appropriate that, to be, the training could never be in-depth to what their, what our professionals have in this particular area. And so, you know, we, the validity of their just diagnosing these kinds of issues were concerned. So, continue forward, but we will have to do that. And then, we'll keep proceeding. This one. Oh, this has to do with, this one passed where it says that where we have AEDs in the high school, we are also going to need to have the Nallexon Co-location Initiative, so that we have the medication that if you overdose, that's always in a place where anyone could grab it quick to give to a student. So, that one is new. Continue forward. This has to do with achievement in classrooms and, and require grabbing go-karts, so that you could get food anywhere in the building, I guess, just to be able to eat, so that you didn't, you didn't miss your chance to get breakfast or whatever. Continue forward. Keep going. And we'll keep going to, just because I think there's a couple. Okay. So, this Open Source Phonics Matching Grant Program did pass, and it has to do with the Science of Reading and utilizing the phonics matching, it's a grant program, so the MSD would provide the matching funds if, in fact, school system wanted to pick up the open source phonics program, and it supports what the state is advocating for, which is the Science of Reading. And then, if you continue forward. This one had to do with the libraries and extensively, this is really in-depth, so I don't want to spend too much time in it, but it just talks about making sure that we will have to develop a policy and procedures that has to do with reviewing objections to materials in school library media programs and, and other requirements related to that. And we do actually have in place review of the media materials in school libraries. So, and we do have an administrative procedure that does address this. So, this will be pretty easy to put together. And then, continue forward. I'm going to let you go further. This one, the, can you back up one second? This passed where it says that we, we have the, at an IP meeting, there's a program called Maryland Achieving a Better Life Experience. And so, when either on an IP meeting or distributing electronically, we'll go to every parent so that they can, and when they're in a meeting, so that it gives them information about what's available for their student, especially when it's time to leave public education. And then, if you continue forward, I think the next one has to do with the advocacy program. So, can you forward to slide down one more, Cindy? So, this one has to do with access to attorneys, advocates, consultants for special ed program and fund. And this is really establishing access. So, people who, who actually, so legal services are very expensive. So, students, families that are, meet the household income not more than a hundred and fifty percent, I think it's the income guidelines, so that they, for their child who has a disability, they can have the access to a service, which is carried on by the Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service, so that they could either have attorneys, advocates, or consultants who are coming into IP meetings or going to do process hearings or the mediations or resolution hearings, so that they have support. And I don't know, if you recall last year, when there was the bill that passed that talked about the burn of proof, and that bill never did make it, that was, that didn't, that wasn't passed. However, I think this was like, sort of like, well, if we couldn't get that through, then at least get through. So, this does provide for low-income families to have legal services. Then, continue forward. Almost there. This one has to do with ensuring that all textbooks are completed on time and that local boards are completed in the sense that they are transcribed into Braille for students who are visually impaired, so that they have their books available to them at the beginning of each school year. Because I think what happens a lot of times is they, the books aren't, they don't arrive to the place where they do the Brailing, which is the Instructional Resource Center, and we don't receive the materials back in time. And students who are visually impaired start the year without having their textbooks in Braille. So, this is an important one to support those students. And then, if you continue further. This has to do with doing active shooter drills, where you actually traumatize students by having pretend active shooters going through the school and pretending that they're an active shooter. And basically, it says you are not allowed to do that. And I do know some school systems that actually do that. We do not do that. Ours is pretty set and we don't have students, you know, have to experience like an active shooter coming into a building or something. So, but this, but it's still important. It will follow, you know, we will follow it as we move forward to, you know, if we progress in any of the trainings for active shooters. And then, if you go further, Ram is there. Can you go a little bit further? Yes. This has to do with mapping and knowing where things are within our local schools, so that they'll be mapping standards by the IAC. And it's, the whole idea is so that if something were to happen at school, you want to know where certain things are in a school, because you have it mapped out. So, then, continue forward. Cindy. And we'll continue with that. Let's just keep going forward. I'm just going to see if there's any other things. Keep going. Oh, this is the crisis hotline one, I think we had a conversation about. And they are recommending that we have the crisis hotline provided to local boards of ed. Each student's grades is six to twelve and to call it suicide and crisis lifeline. And we are supposed to, at some point, let me see, an effective date, so July one would be then to, and the students' ID cards have that number, so that they know where to call if, in fact, they were, they were in crisis or were at a point where they really needed help, because they might commit suicide. Continue forward. Keep going. Keep going. Just trying to hit, that one's extensive, so I'm not going to talk about that one at this point. Keep going. Keep going. Oh, artificial intelligence. So, this one is, they're going to, they, they AI, they're going to have AI sub-cabinet of the Governor's Executive Council, and they are, that sub-cabinet is supposed to develop like a roadmap for AI and then include recommendations on responsible and productive use of AI in local school systems. So, this is good, because right now, I know we did our AI policy, but we also put in that policy that we would be reviewing every single year, because we knew right now it's so new and there's so many things happening, that what might be happening right now might look very different a year from now. So, this will be good if we can get some guidance from the state in terms of what we need to have in place for, for our AI policy. And continue forward. Cindy, okay. Keep going. Local bills. This is where I did want to spend just a couple of seconds. So, the one bill that we had talked about previously, House Bill eight twenty-one, which had to do with Prince George's County Student Support Specialist Networks and Success Action Plans. We had actually supported that with amendments, because it was very redundant to all the services we already provide in our high schools. And, and the cost would be pretty high, to be able to have additional staff. We would need to be able to set up these networks and run them in every single high school. So, that bill passed. And then, if you scroll down, I think there's another thing on local bills passed. And then, there is House Bill one ninety-one. So, that one had to do with making sure the Prince George's County or our employees, anyone that lives in the county and works in the, and works in the school system, would get a property tax credit. But at the very, very last minute, what they did was they added to that bill, it was the oddest thing, and they called it Public School Employees Property Tax Credit and Office of Integrity and Compliance. And so, this particular bill now not only addresses the tax credit that our employees can receive, but it talks about the Office of Integrity and Compliance and the fact that it's an independent unit within the school system and that instead of being within the school system and that instead of being an employee now, it was, the person will actually be a kind of contract with the school system. Um, and so it's, and also it talks about additional staff for, to run that office so that it will, it will cost us a lot more money in terms of the staffing positions that, um, that we will need. And then what it does do, there's one thing that did happen is they did remove the subpoena powers of this particular person. So that, that, um, that was something that was sort of positive. But it's so interesting, this happened on the very last day of the session where they ended up adding all this language to the tax property bill. And then can you scroll down one more time, Cindy? I think we might be near the end. Oh, so, um, we also had one other bill, House Bill 838, which had to do with, with the, originally, we didn't track it originally because it had nothing to do with us. It had to do with Maryland State Department of Education. And again, on the very, I was, I want to say the Friday before the Monday that the session closed, they changed the language of it and said, instead of Maryland State Department of Education doing it, it would be doing this responsibly, which I'm gonna tell you about in a minute, that the Prince George's County Public Schools would do it. And what we are required to do is administer a grant program, uh, which we will give money, our money, to nonprofits to support daycare providers, private daycare providers. So this is, this is pretty disconcerting that this happened so quickly. And I mean, not so quickly, but at the very end of the session, it did go into the Rules Committee and then, um, and everyone, usually when it goes in the Rules Committee, it dies. And then on the very last day of the session, somehow it got referred out and was put on the floor and got voted in. So this one, this, the House Bill 838 is very disconcerting. The only other thing I wanted to say about failed bills, there's a bunch of failed bills and they, a lot of them are related to curriculum. So if you recall, our platform talked about the fact that we would oppose anything and where those legislators are dictating curriculum and standards curriculum. And fortunately, this one actually, this, these bills that had to do with, the one was the Health Education, one had to do with bias and the Holocaust and all those things. There was several of them, they all failed. So that, that's encouraging because we don't want our legislators involved in, in, you know, determining standards for our students and their education. And I believe that is pretty much it in a nutshell. Um, and I don't think there's a need to actually do one, an overview of our legislative because I just sort of picked everything up right in that presentation.
You did. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. And I will say this was a sort of teaser to our Thursday meeting because you'll have a more in-depth. And then of course, we'll have another presentation in May. Um, so for those that may have, you know, specific questions, there'll be opportunities to ask about this as well as more information coming in about the legislation that's passed, those that have failed and those that the governor signed. Um, so we're gonna move on to item, uh, we're gonna move past item 3.2 Legislative Update and move on to item 4.0 Discussion Items. There are two policies for discussion. Um, each discussion round will last two and a half minutes. Um, so we're gonna move to item 4.1, Policy 0116, Wellness, Nutrition, and Physical Activity. Um, and I go to the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Agenda Item 4.1, Policy 0116, Wellness, Nutrition, and Physical Activity. Mrs. Welsh?
Okay, um, Cindy, do you mind? Yes, thank you. So this policy, if you look at what's currently on the website, there's very, very little in, about this policy there. It's like a one-pager, has very little language. So I did almost a complete revamping of this policy because if you, if you look at, number one, if you look at the law, both federal and state and the laws and the regulations, it's pretty comprehensive and there's pretty many pieces to this, to what should be included in a policy. And so I wanted, I attempted to cover everything that should be included, but certainly, you know, as we go through the process, you feel there should be other things we, you know, that's fine. We'll look at those too. Um, but this just gives the, the policy statement that the board has, which is committed to providing a school environment that promotes student wellness, proper nutrition, 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 education, and regular physical education that enhances development lifelong healthy habits and wellness, nutrition, and regular physical activity. And then that it recognizes the proper nutrition, and physical activity before, during, and after the school day are strongly correlated with positive academic outcomes, including lower absenteeism, improved test scores, enhanced student achievement. And actually, there's loads of brain research out there that talks about how important it is to get physical activity for it to get your brain working. And then our, our current policy on the board that's on the website actually talks also about not just students, but also employees. So I did put, um, that the board is committed to supporting physical, mental health and wellness and the well-being of all staff. And then as far as the purpose, the purpose of this policy is to outline the programs and services designated to promote student wellness initiatives to a coordinated health model. Um, and then it will look at school health services, health, school environment, health, education, coordinate school students, support services, phys ed, and physical activity, food and nutrition services, and community collaboration, and then also address wellness activities to promote physical, mental, social health of staff through a coordinated health, school health model. And I do want to point out, so there's a lot of detail in this, but I, I was trying to be cautious because I also know the administrative procedure should go into a lot more specifics. Um, and I didn't wanna, I didn't want to cross that line either. So, but we can just go through and look at and then discuss it. So if we proceed, Cindy, to the definitions, there's loads and loads of definitions in this policy. It talks about our comprehensive health education, which is a planned sequential comprehensive health education designed to help students acquire skills, attitudes, and functional information needed to support health and well-being. And I do want to point out that as you look at the, if you look at the curriculum, both for the health education, for phys ed, for nutrition, the whole idea is to try to really train students, help them come to realize that this should be a lifestyle for as they move forward in their life and they leave public education, that they have, you know, established for themselves, good nutrition standards, you know, behaviors and also physical activity, things like that, which are so important to your health. Um, and this, this just gives you real, very quickly definitions for curriculum, health, education, mental health. And then if you scroll down further, um, and then it talks about nutrition, education, and physical activity, physical education, recess, then the School Health Wellness Council, which is a group of individuals who represent segments of the community and the eight components of the coordinated school program. And it is mandated by law and they are to provide advice and recommendation to the school superintendent and the county health officer and matters related to health, safety, wellness of students and staff. Then scroll down further. And then it tells you that the different areas, keep going, there's eight of them. If you scroll down. Or seven, sorry. And then the Maryland Nutrition Standards for All Foods Sold in Schools, which is referred to as Smart Snacks. And, um, it's ensuring that not only do we meet all the standards for the school breakfast program and the National School Lunch Program, and then Special Supplemental Nutrition, these are all federal laws, program for women, infants, and children, and the Summer Food Service Program, and Child and Adult Care Program, but that we also ensure that our smart, Smart Snacks, snacks apply nutrition standards that especially are part of those standards, but also that could be sold to students at, at school during the school day, like in our vending machines. And if you scroll down, um, and then the last thing is just the overall definition of wellness, which was the last definition. So then this goes into each of the specifics, the comprehensive health education, which is really pretty much those standards are dictated by Maryland State Department of Education in terms of the things that must be included in the health curriculum. If you scroll down, Cindy, uh, you'll see all the different areas and then continue forward. And then it talks about the comprehensive health education will be implemented again as required by MSD for grades pre-K through eight. And then there should be, uh, health education from grades nine to 12 as a point five credit to comply with graduation requirements. Um, and then, um, we also, it does, and this is in the law, that we would establish a joint committee of educators and representatives from the community for the purpose of reviewing and commenting on sexual health instructional materials to be submitted to the board and superintendent. So that has to do with that curriculum, then you go to phys ed. And so, uh, physical education shall provide students with knowledge, confidence, skills, and motivation to enjoy a lifetime of healthful, uh, physical activity. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, it says that will ensure it's developmentally appropriate for each of the grade levels. And again, we'll be providing it every year for students pre-K through eight. And then in grades nine to 12, program offerings, uh, will be provided to enable graduation requirements. Uh, and then also, as, as required by state regulation, that we never will exclude a student because of any type of physical limitation or medical condition. Instead, we will work to come up with some type of accommodation so that they can still participate in physical education. Then physical activity, teachers shall offer physical activity throughout the school day to support student learning and achievement. So recess will be a daily competitive elementary school students' day. Uh, all students will be encouraged to participate in monitor vigorous physical activity. Uh, school staff may not deny participation in recess or other physical activity as a form, a form of discipline or punishment unless the safety of a student is in question. And then scroll down. And then all students in middle and high school will be provided with daily opportunities before, during, and after school for physical activity, uh, physical, example, physical activity breaks, extracurricular, physical activity programs, clubs, intermurals, interschoolistic athletics. And then we have school health services, which, um, that, that, they contribute to the overall culture of health and wellness within the school. And it's provide, that all students have access to these school health services and that a registered nurse will be assigned full-time as a school nurse to each PHS school to implement the health services program. And then we get to nutrition service, environment, and services. And it says that, um, a healthy school nutrition environment supports healthy eating by promoting healthy foods and beverages through cafeteria marketing and encouraging participation in school meal program. And that, of course, Prince George's County, uh, public schools does, uh, participate in the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program and will provide meals that meet or, um, or exceed current USDA school nutrition standards for school meals. Um, free potable water will be available to students during meal service in school cafeterias. Um, and school meals will include fresh locally grown foods from farms engaged in sustainable practice whenever practical, practical bowl, like scroll down a little bit, Cindy? Okay, and then it says all foods and beverages sold to students outside the school meal program such adamantum meet or exceed the Maryland nutrition standards for all foods sold in schools, which has to do with those smart foods, uh, smart snacks, I guess. So these are, well, they'll, they will apply in all locations where foods and beverages are sold. Wait, wait. And then, um, the other thing is you cannot use food, you should not. You're discouraged from using food rewards and incentives to encourage student achievement or, or desirable behavior. Um, that is discouraged. Um, and all other foods and beverages available on school campus, uh, scroll down. But not sold, such as provided classroom parties and school celebrations must also meet the Maryland nutrition standards for all foods sold in schools. And, um, activities also shall be provided for students to offer their input on school meals and menu items. So you know, sometimes we are so busy and trying to have all these wonderful nutritious meals and then the students are like, ugh, I don't want to eat that. And so, working with students to try to get their input to see, I mean, there maybe can be a compromise that it's healthy, but at the same time, it's something that appeals to them and they will eat it. So that, that is important. And then the last thing is that there will be no physical segregation or scroll up, I mean, you just, okay. Or discriminatory practices against any child eligible for free lunch or reduced-priced lunch made by the school. There should be no over identification of any child receiving a free or reduced-priced lunch by special tokens or tickets and announced or published list of names by, by any other means. Then we get to social, emotional, and mental health support services, which is also considered part of the program. And of course, all, actually, I missed the S there, I see. All schools shall create a safe and supportive school environment for all students that is culturally proficient, engaging, and inclusive. That when you're looking at social, emotional, and mental health services, you should look at it from both a prevention intervention, uh, perspective, providing both, uh, where you're addressing and integrating social health, emotional health, mental health, physical health, and behavioral health. And then if you scroll down further, that school-based mental health services involving collaboration between schools, mental health professionals, families, and community organizations will be implemented to create supportive environments for students. And that mental health, substance abuse, violence prevention services shall be provided by appropriately licensed school psychologists, school social workers, professional school counselors, mental health clinicians, and/or substance abuse counselors assigned to schools. Can you scroll down, Cindy? Um, and, um, these, what these professionals shall, uh, address socially, emotional, behavioral health concerns as well as provide support for violence and substance use prevention efforts using evidence-based practices in a culturally and linguistically appropriate manner. And then I have a section here also on employee wellness. Again, I, um, I included that because in the current policy that sits on the website right now, there is language about ensuring that our employees, you know, that we are providing something for our staff. So, uh, they, um, so we, Prince George's County will disseminate physical and mental health information resources to staff. And then they will also provide wellness benefits to all staff, including access to a wide variety of wellness classes that promote, among others, physical activity, health, uh, healthy eating, self-care, and stress management. So I just have to say, I got on the website and I thought, I just want to see, do, do we even? I wonder if you look under benefits, if you can find something. And sure enough, we actually have an extensive program of courses and stuff we offer employees, which, uh, actually addresses all this wellness. So that's, that's actually quite good. Um, and then we have, let's move forward to the School Health Wellness Council, which is superintendent, and if you can scroll down, the superintendent will, um, um, is, appoints the people, or can you scroll down, please, Cindy? The school, the what, School Health Wellness Council? Um, okay, um, keep going, next page. Can you scroll? Yes, there you go. So the just, the superintendent designee will appoint a local school health council consisting of school system leadership, local health department leadership, parents, community members, and students that'll support implementation of wellness initiatives in schools. Um, the superintendent and the School Health Wellness Council will develop and implement evaluation model, which shall include a review of school-level data related to implementation of this policy and the corresponding administrative procedure. And the School Health Wellness Council will serve in advisory capacity to develop, implement, monitor, review, and suggest revisions to the corresponding administrative procedure. And then if you go down to school-based program, each school is, the superintendent designee shall ensure that each school has what's called a school wellness action team, SWAT, um, which consists of parents and staff members who represent different wellness components that are addressed by this policy. And they will, uh, be, um, providing leadership in the school wellness efforts and monitoring the annual school-based implementation of the policy and corresponding administrative procedure. They also will gather and report school-level data on the implementation of policy and corresponding administrative procedure. And then if you scroll down, it just says the superintendent is directed, if you'll scroll down, please. Cindy, the superintendent is directed to develop and administrate procedure to implement this policy. And interestingly enough, if you look in the law, it actually says that policy and procedure should be reviewed every three years. So I put in that the administrative procedure will be reviewed, be reviewed and revised every three years. And then I said the board will review this policy every three years and to make it, and make appropriate revisions accordingly. So that is it in a nutshell for all the things that's fast and furious, but it does cover a lot of different areas.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the floor is now open for discussion and comments. And your hand will be recognized in the order of it raised virtually, or you can come off mute and say that you'd like to be in queue. All right, just waiting to see if there are any committee meetings, members first, uh, Board Member Boozer Struther. I don't see any, so I'm gonna recognize Board Member Boozer Struther. Board Member Boozer Struther?
My apologies and difficulty coming on. I'm gonna put my video on. Um, thank you so much, um, Chair and Ms. Welsh. You covered so much of what I felt was missing in, in all the incredible work that's been happening in the school system that should be documented all in one place. So, um, which reduces my, my input quite a bit. And I, I appreciate my colleagues in the committee for giving me this opportunity to, to make some remarks early in your discussions. One thing that I have heard significantly for my years on the board and particularly since, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic is that we should seriously consider recess for middle school for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I know that some middle school principals have, have been piloting ways to do this out of necessity for social, emotional well-being and health and found that they were, they first did it because when we returned to, um, school buildings that when we were still required to wear masks, it was a helpful break in the day for fresh air. But I know some principals are continuing to use their own recess model. And I, uh, would, I, I think we should, uh, get some research and seriously consider, consider that. Consider that um, and have a serious discussion about it because we talk about the behavior of our children. We feel quite perplexed by solutions and movement uh, has been proven. And we, there's a lot of data on that, so I, I would ask for us to, to look into that. Um, in terms of references in the document, I would love to see reference. A little more documentation of the references of some of the other aspects of this work. Where the blueprint for Maryland's future community schools model, how that is driving, you know, community-based healthcare clinics, our decision. To have six new community ba- community health clinics. I think the concept of wellness is in PG CPS now, the full. We look at the whole family and this goes all the way back to the equity policy, which I do believe may, maybe should be referenced as well. As a starting point of mental health and wellness and in that policy. Um, I would like to see more on that we want those clinics staffed. Um, and noted MSD's clinics that we have in some of our high schools, not been very successful, we need to keep trying. But we now have six, six high-quality clinic facilities. And we need to put in policy, those need to always be running. You know, we have a, I know this first year they're not. I also think we should mention access to virtual healthcare like Hazel Health in some capacity. That model that we've been providing, maybe that goes under the nurses section. Um, and I'd like to see a reference some, and, and this is more like the cross-referencing you do, um, Ms. Welsh. Where you kind of note them at the bottom, climate-friendly food, the climate change action plan should be referenced. The uh, climate-friendly food, the walk bike, you know, walking bike to school. You know, there might be, you know, there's probably more than I, than I'm not thinking of off the top of my head. But I'm really thinking, when I'm thinking about equity policy, climate change action plan blueprint, that we're really just noting them as. Some of more of your references to why we're doing it this way. But I think my most substantive are the seriously considering mi- a middle school recess model or expansion of physical education. Credits, the um, uh, the clinics that we have these facilities. That the policy should be, they're always up and running with healthcare for students and community. And um, yeah, so I think those are my most substantive. And then I would note, we do have a meal shaming policy that should be noted as well. That you got, you kind of got to it, so that, I'll stop. I don't, I didn't hear the buzzer, but my apologies.
And we're happy to have a second round, I just want to make sure we at least try to honor somewhat close to the time, I'm happy to have a second.
I, I just needed one round, I got it all done, thank you, I appreciate you.
No problem. Alright, we're going to move to um, student member Rivera Forbes and vice chair of the committee.
Thank you Chair Briggs, hello everyone, can you all hear me well? Okay, awesome. Um, my apologies for not being able to unmute myself earlier, I was coming from a school event. I just wanted to say, I really love how in-depth this policy is, it covers so many important points. Um, or remember Boozer Strather kind of already said everything I wanted to say. Um, but I was going to refer to the, just the students having a little bit of say and maybe what the lunch menus would be. I know a while back, I was discussing with the superintendent of a possibility of a student advisory specifically built for. Um, giving advice on lunch menus and also um, adding new lunch options as well, working with our nutrition department on that. I know Montgomery County set up a team like that and they did taste testing on food items, especially new ones before they hit the cafeterias. And it went very well and they brought in so many new food, um, food options to schools. And students really liked it a lot. So I think maybe having something in there like that, or if we do want to do a survey that's countywide as well. It would be a great idea, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're going to go to Vice Chair Walker.
Hey, thank you. Um, yes, I just wanted to, uh, board member Boozer Strather hit on all things. I just wanted to uh, recapture the middle school and high school, um, adding in their recess time. When I talked to my son, um, and I'm hoping I have this right, what he shares is that when you get to middle school level, the uh, recess is gone. However, he does still have PE, but PE is also reduced as well. So PE isn't all year long, it's um, I think I understand it to be only two of the semesters and then it's not every day. Every other day, so like a A day or a B day. So I am in full support of ensuring that our scholars are given an extra time or additional time for recess in creative way. So whether that's uh, you know, leveraging our S E L or anything uh, like that, I just wanted to give my full support around that. And then I think I heard, I'm not sure, but when uh, we were going through the legislation. I thought there was one that said that there would be a, a governor's committee put together around wellness, health and wellness. I think that was the one, Ms. Welsh, was that the one that the, a governor's committee was being put around?
I think you're right.
Yeah, so I think I heard that, but if that's the case, I would love to see what needs to be true from someone from education being um, a part of that. Um, discussion, so I can talk about that in our Thursday meeting, um, when we have our discussions around legislation. Um, thanks.
Thank you. Um, and Mrs. Welsh, I just want to, um, so I'll, I'll kind of opine here really quickly. Um, and just share that one of the concerns that I, Cindy, I was hoping you could, yeah, I want to make sure I knew. Um, one of the things that I wanted to share was just that I feel like the policy right now seems really comprehensive, seems great. Um, but I think one of the things that I would be thinking about as an educator is the balancing act of wanting to give more recess time. Wanting to give more activity time and then still trying to like meet test benchmarks. You know, get students academically where they need to be by the end of the year, particularly for edu- all educators, you know, that are kind of like navigating post-pandemic. Um, some of the learning gaps that are still there, academic gaps that exist. Um, and so something that I really would want to know and hear from is educators. Um, and what are some of the barriers that they're having? If we're talking about giving more activity time. Um, we've got to also work with, within like a realistic kind of framework of like, how could that fit into the day? While they still have all of the other responsibilities, what I don't want to do is just throw another responsibility in their lap and then say, also, by the way, get your kids to proficiency by the end of the year. Um, but give them more time in the class, you know, outside. Um, so you know, there's some type of a survey or some language in there of capturing, you know, educators' perspectives that we could just have annually. That the super, the superintendent would have, um, to really, in the board as well to reflect on. Um, and the other piece with middle school and recess that, that I completely agree with. Um, but I also know, having taught close to middle school, is that that, that age is, is um, is, it's an interesting time. And recess is very different for, you know, second graders than it is for seventh graders and eighth graders. And so I do think research-based and evidence-based like approaches to more physical activity to something that's comparable to recess. But maybe is also more age-appropriate, um, would be something that I would really want to consider. Because I, I just think about the recent bullying uh, r- report that we saw and how middle school is a hot spot. And so I, recess is the time when a lot of stuff happened, because that's when, the time when a lot of it happened when I was a teacher. Um, and so some way to manage that, and it's very different from a second grader or first grader, you can easily kind of intervene. Um, or at least they know, they have better and more crafty ways of hiding information from educators. So um, I would want to have something that we can do to really support um, our teachers if they're going to do those things. I think hopefully that makes sense, what I was saying around like the, the research piece, but I'm happy to share more information later. Um, and then we'll go to Vice Chair Walker for a second round.
Yes, thank you for bringing up all of those key points, um, Chair Briggs. They are so good and just something to really think about. I love that you intertwined educators in that. Uh, because that's going to be really important, they're the ones that's on the ground and to your point, it looks very different as you move up inside of the different levels. So also wanted to just somehow add in, just as they do that, just the, the span of creativity for it. I know when we look at other countries' um, data on how they leverage their uh, recess. Or let's say outside activity, it might not even still be called recess, they're um, intertwining even education within that. If we might have, and, or if we might have an opportunity with whatever work group there is to lean in, um, lean forward on that. Whether it's you're learning math skills, that's something you're doing, or uh, you know, something to that effect. So I know we don't get as detailed inside of our policy, but looking over it as uh, as uh, Ms. Welsh. As you add in, uh, just the teachers, I think just added in a word, you know, so that we can grab their creativity and how their day. Um, and how their day is structured in order to, to meet the needs of our student population would be awesome. Thank you.
Mrs. Welsh, do you want to add anything? Looks like you.
Well, uh, what I was wondering is, so um, uh, I, I think I actually am big proponent on physical activity. Um, and I think research is really important, but what I, but at the same time, I know exactly what you're saying in terms of the um, the day. So then, because number one, there's all these requirements and we probably already have time requirements of how many minutes they have to get in for math and reading. And I'm our English, language arts, whatever. Um, and as you go up through middle school, they are adding all these other additional courses. So I know that's a major factor, just trying to balance that out. And then I do know, based on the transportation audit, there's going to be changes probably in bus, uh, you know, times coming and going. But at the same time, we don't want to lose it. So I like the idea of looking also at creative ways of providing physical activity. Because I, I just think it's absolutely so critical for your brain to work, you know, I, I, for myself. I will, you know, do little things just to keep moving because I'm in front of a computer a lot and I think you can lose sight if you don't get that exercise. So what I was wondering is the possibility, because some of this is stuff that maybe we need to um, spend time really looking into. If we want to do it right, if we could maybe include language also within the policy that would talk about some, some type of uh, work-study group. That we bring, uh, you know, different players in and actually do, look at the, the, look at the brain research. Look at the research from other countries and everything and then report back out in a year and bring this policy back up for uh, review. So that we actually were considering everything and we don't have unintended consequences uh, by our actions. I don't know, it's just a thought.
I love that suggestion and honestly, I was going to probably say something like that, I just didn't know we could do that. So you've taught me something new today. Um, I'm going to go to board member Boozer Strather, uh, but I'm a guest on that. Board member Boozer Strather? It may have also been an accident, I'm not sure if you meant to raise your hand, if you are talking.
I did, I did, sorry, um, my phone is causing me problems with the controls on Zoom and I apologize to everyone. And now I'm looking for the video thing to come back and it is not, so um, I wanted to, you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to support that idea to do a, a study group. Because I, I do feel like this needs serious, uh, we need to look at it really seriously. Because of all the implications for a, a school day. But the reality is that it is a significant area that we have not looked into. To help with our social, emotional um, issues in the school building. Our strategic plan data tells us that our middle school students aren't feeling safe. And they aren't feeling um, the, in the, the, with the percentages of bullying. And move, movement, you, you know, I think we all read in the education press so much around. This concept of movement recess, whatever words you want to give to it, positive benefits. So I think, I think to do due diligence seems like a really good idea to me and I, I appreciate that suggestion.
Great. Thank you so much, Board Member Boozer Strather. Um, well, it sounds like we're in agreement here that we want more information, um, that came as a recommendation from a few board members. Um, and I think that you kind of nicely um, package it up, um, uh, Mrs. Welsh. So we're going to move on to um, the next policy and I'll just say, please, please be advised that this policy will be returned to the next P and G meeting for action. Um, are there any objections? Hearing none, please, uh, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the committee on policy zero one one six. And have it brought back to the next P and G meeting um, for further discussion. So we're going to move on to item four point two, policy twenty eight zero one, safety program. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update uh, on agenda item four point two, policy twenty eight zero one, safety program. Before I move to, or before you speak, Mrs. Welsh, I want to acknowledge Cindy really quickly to see if she has something to help us.
Cindy? I think she's probably asking my same question, are we bringing it back for action or for the discussion?
That's it.
Oh, uh, yeah, for further discussion, sorry if that wasn't clear. Okay, so Mrs. Welsh, I'm going to turn it to you for, for item four point two, policy twenty eight zero one, safety program.
Okay, so um, this policy.
Sorry, I, I couldn't get to the mic um, fast enough. I thought it was coming back for action, so I apologize that I didn't say anything for opposition. I guess just, is it appropriate for me to just ask a question then around that?
Well, you have, so, um, go ahead, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. I, I didn't, I thought it was coming back for um, action. Um, what are we further discussing? Sorry, I thought we just did a great job discussing, I didn't know what we were coming back to discuss.
Um, I mean, I think that we, we can certainly move it forward for action. I think because we had those recommendations and there was some language pieces in there. It may be that she can embed some of those initial suggestions that we had and put that update to the policy. And then of course, we're going to essentially table it for next year, but we'd have those, um, those highlights that we had here. Um, that were shared by a number of board members. So that was my thinking, was that um, we'd at least agree on that portion. And then of course, about the study, then we'd have this up again for further discussion. Uh, for uh.
I guess my only pushback and I'm happy to vote however, that the committee sees fit, is that I am mindful of our, of the months. That it takes to get to uh, the board meeting and I know we're going into, what are we now in April? So we only have May and June and I recognize this, I just feel like we did a great amount of discussion today. We know the study is not, that's a. Very large to study, frankly, but over time, um, and so I just feel like we, we've done a great amount of work. She already did a lot of work, I don't know, I'm, I'm good to move it to action.
Okay, well, um, so maybe we can sit, so are there, so it sounds like you're objecting to, um, well, you're not objecting to uh, returning to P and G for, for action. Um, and no one.
No.
Actually, that would have been, that's why the question came. Um, so we're actually going to move.
Yeah, I just misinterpreted, you thought it was discussion and I thought it was action, that's the reason I said something.
No, actually, I think I was wrong. I think I said, uh, the, to P and G committee for action and then I, then I said further discussion. So what I meant to say was, and thank you for correcting me, you all, please be advised that this policy, we return to the next P and G committee for action. Said if there are objections to that, I didn't hear any objections. Um, so we're going to move forward with action, thank you for correcting me. Um, and we're going to move on to item four point two, um, policy twenty eight zero one, safety program. Mrs. Welsh, I'll turn it over to you for updates on that specific policy.
Okay, so um, the po- current policy that sits on the, on the website has to do with, uh, it's called safety programs. And then it talks about, um, it just talks about making sure that we um, we're, we're trying to minimize any hazards and so that we don't have accidents. And so that's why it says safety programs, but I went through all of our policies, we do have a couple specific to um, um, like um, sexual abuse. Things like that and reporting uh, incidents of sexual abuse, that type of thing. But we don't really have a comprehensive policy that talks about ensuring that our schools are safe and supportive uh, for our students. Um, because when you think about safety and security, it's much broader than just ensuring that we are avoiding hazards. You know, and we don't have accidents like um, someone slipping and falling or things like that uh, in a building. So I did take the, the um, go ahead, I went ahead and I actually, um, and certainly I don't mind at all changing it back. But I felt like because safety and security is such a major topic all the time in schools in general and certainly in our schools. It, it was, it would be, might be beneficial for us to take a broad sweep at all these types of things. So I, in the policy statement, I talk about providing a safety and it's not just even for students, but for any person within the public. And print on our property and involved in our activities and to create and maintain safe and inclusive, supportive schools. And workplaces where students, staff can be successful, achieve an excellence in education. And that, um, the other thing which is a critical piece is that all students, employees, parents and third parties of PGPS. Shall uh, share the responsibility of the health, safety and general welfare of students and employees. Um, and for establishment sustaining a safe and supportive uh, school climate. And then also in making sure that we have a, a preparation, open communication with school communities and local agencies. That are, that are uh, critical for promoting school safety. Uh, and that we do maintain relationships with our county agencies that provide health and human uh, services, uh, mental health services, law enforcement. Other public safety responders and community service organizations. So that they, that Duke establishment uh, could, and contribute to the establishment and maintenance of safe and uh, welcoming learning environments. And workplaces for students and staff. So I, that was the policy statement. And then the purpose of the policy is mainly just to outline the approach to maintain safe and supportive uh, school and workplace environments. So if you go to the, if you scroll down Cindy, I have numerous definitions, um. One is, and these are ones that are also sitting either in administrative procedures or other policies, but there's one for abuse, is keep. One is, and these are ones that are also sitting either in administrative procedures or other policies, but there's one for abuse. These keep, I'm not gonna go over each one. I'm just pointing out what's it there. Uh, can scroll down, please. And then behavioral threat assessment, then emergency plan, then um, I'm also referencing employee in numerous places. So I wanted to make sure we had a complete definition of employee. And then if you scroll down further, um, the employee code of conduct and then also a definition for parent. Uh, which is pretty comprehensive definition. If you scroll down further. Keep going. And then the, uh, the safety program, which is, which is actually defines what the policy previously talked about. So I don't want to ignore that because of course we do want to make sure. That we are, our conditions within our schools, buildings and grounds are safe and we do want to eliminate safety hazards. So incorporate that also. Then the school climate, which is a major factor, then just a definition for school property and school related activities because the policy references that. And if you scroll down further. And then the definition is supportive and then the student code of conduct, third parties, and then a definition of threat. I think that might be it. If you scroll down a little bit further, Cindy, that's it. So um, it starts off by saying that all, 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 all people, like all um. Like students, employees, parents, third parties shall contribute to establishment and maintenance of safe, welcoming, supportive learning environments and workplaces. And then the, the superintendent and um will review and approve, designated will review and approve the student rights and responsibility handbook, which includes the student code of conduct annually. So that, that's him looking at it and making sure someone else reviewing it and ensure it covers everything it should cover. And then also that he or he or she or the designated will review and approve the employee code of conduct annually. And then it says the sup- superintendent designated will implement a multifaceted approach to maintain a safe and supportive learning. And workplace environments include the following. So first of all, it talks about ensuring that we have a, a behavior threat assessment process. Which we, we also have a policy that addresses that. Um, but it does, um, and then we have two administrative procedures, um, uh, AP nine, twenty nine, fifty two. And twenty nine, fifty two, one, point one, which um, the fifty two talks about threat assessments for students and nine, and twenty nine, fifty two, point one talks about threat assessments for employees and other um adults. So that, so it's referencing that. And then also it talks about denying access to a person who willfully disturbs or otherwise will, willfully. Um, prevents order in a school, which goes to our uh, basically our do not trespass um, policy that we have. We have one on, on that one also. And then we have the use of resource, um, school resource officers and it addresses the uh memorandum of understanding that we have with them as long, as well as uh. Our local law enforcement agencies and safety and security services coverage. So that's also an important uh factor in ensuring that we have safety in the schools. And we do have an MOU with uh our local uh police um departments related to our uh security resource officers. And then um, that um, it are, but in accordance with um, I think you're scrolling, you're a little faster than I can talk, Cindy. I'm pretty fast talking, but really going fast. Anyway, Maryland Safe to Learn Act of two thousand eighteen, it says that all PGPS schools will conduct safety evaluations annually and so they are required to do that. And then also that we, each school and facility shall update its emergency plan annually. At the start of the scho- school year and submit it for review. And that it should be in line with the Maryland State Department of Education Emergency Plan Guidelines for local school systems and schools. And that's a very critical, critical plan that really. Schools need to be um, very aware of and, and practicing and implementing just in case there'd be some situation that would happen in a school. So that you're prepared. And then also that schools and facilities shall practice the required number and type of emergency drills throughout the school year. I know they, uh, that they also do that, but that's an important factor too. And then if you scroll down further, then where it goes on to talk about technology, uh, components and facility enhancements. So. Um, we want to make sure also that we have prompt, reliable communication between staff and schools and amongst schools, school buses and publics, and also the public safety responders. Because that's critically important when there is an incident that occurs in a school or something, just being able to communicate quickly to get this help bit that you need to get into a building. And also communicate with the, the staff within the ability so that they can follow through on, on one of their drills that they're used to doing that, that to protect themselves. And then also that, um, then we should also maintain an aggressive safety program. And this is, this actually comes from the previous policy to identify, eliminate, recognize safety hazards. Um, and to also provide professional learning opportunities to train employees to minimize these hazards and prevent accidents. Um, and I will say that um, the office of um, school facilities does have a lot of their staff. Uh, and really do a lot of training in that arena to ensure that schools are set up in such a way that they are, we're trying to avoid. Any possible uh safety hazards that would cause an accident. Then in terms of, if you progress further down. To the policy, uh, you'll see that also talks about um, providing um, the, the curriculum shall include safety and injury prevention u- units. Uh, also supplemented by school programs related to school safety, safety, students, physical, social and psychological well being. And then also to implement appropriate measures to ensure the security of all elements of PGPS systems, technology and data. Which we just recently did as, in the beginning of the year, had to do with um IT acceptable, the security of our, our technology, the use of our technology. And then also the fact that any employee of Prince George County who suspects that a student has been abused or neglected. That they have the responsibility um to report to CPS. Um, and then also to utilize a continuum of uh support services and behavior interventions um, um, to really uh support our students. For example, including accommodation, social skills, training, restorative practices. Um, peer coaching, mentoring, school counseling services through PGCS. Uh, can you scroll down a little bit, please? Uh, through uh, before, during and after threats and emergencies, because when there, there are a lot of those types of, of. Skills and everything are really critically important, even, even like getting kids prepared as well as during and then after a threat and being able to review when it happened. And then in alignment of policy, um, zero, one, two, five, non-discrimination. Um, school safety measures should not reinforce biases against or rely on the profiling of students based on their actual perceived personal characteristics. And we actually, we've, we've touched on that numerous times, like even when we were looking at, at the search and seizure policy and stuff. So we want to ensure. That we follow through with that at all times. And then the other really important piece is collaborating with county agencies, including health, law enforcement, and human resources and other public safety organizations. Provide safe and supportive learning environment. So the purpose was really just to try to be as comprehensive as possible to consider all the. Possible things that when we're looking at, when the board is looking at what they consider to be a safe and supportive environment, what kinds of things do we have in place to be able to provide that for our students? And so um, it says that the superintendent is authorized to develop administrative procedures to implement this policy and also that the um. The superintendent shall ensure that students, employees, parents and third parties are notified of the provisions of this policy annually, because I think that's another important piece. That just that the notification. And if you, if you scroll down, Cindy, um, go, keep going, you'll see. That this, if you look at this, this policy actually crosses across, I can't tell you how many policies that we have that touch on this little piece and that little piece and this little piece. So. Uh, this is sort of like pointed all together. And so there, there's a lot of policies that um, touch on it, but don't really totally address it. So this sort of brings it all together. And then if you look at our administrative procedures, um, and you'll see, if you scroll down, Cindy. It's a good number of administrative procedures that we have in place again to ensure safety for our students and our staff, uh, and anyone that's in our building. So um. So I don't know. That's, that was just a thought and I'm certainly, you know, open to always changing anything within it, though, whatever you would like, so.
Great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. And I do want to note that we did have a board member that had to hop. So I'm hoping that we can have more engagement for our, our committee members that are still here. I mean, your hand will be recognized in the order that it is raised. Also, feel free to come off mute and let me know that you'd like to be in queue. Okay, seeing no hands, um, Mrs. Welsh, the one thing I want to say just about this policy is that um, I'm thinking about the school. We're not school shooting. I'm thinking about the shooting that happened on Friday, um, with about five different students um, from various high schools across the county. And one of the things that came to mind for me was that um, school administrators, they know their buildings and they know those areas. I'm thinking about Roosevelt, for example, the high school in my district. Um, I was talking to the principal and she's like, oh, I know that this back door area is a place where a lot of students can easily ditch, like they can go out to the tent buildings, the trailers. Outside of the school and then they could choose not to come back, you know, or during lunchtime, you know, leave the campus. Um, and so one of the things I'd love to kind of see included in here in this plan is just um, a review of like some type of like a review of hotspot, hot, hotspot. Or um, high frequency areas or um, periods of time where there are um, going to be um. Truancies, you know, so like you're gonna have this season where seniors are gonna want to ditch because it's warmer outside, you know, they're getting ready. And particularly this, I mean, you know, students were um, that were impacted by the pandemic, um, haven't had a lot of freedom um, for some time. So I think that um. It'd be nice if schools were able to know when those periods are and they can bolster their security measures. As well as receive helpful support from the administration on, you know, things to look out for, you know, so it's like, oh, you know, during this season, remember that. So you know, students may try to do these things, um, you know, um, here are some helpful tips of how to equip your buildings, you know, to support you as you're supporting students. Um, and I think that that can be based on like, if there's some way of tracking data to say like, when do your truancy spike? You know, I'm sure principals already do this, but also the, the district can support. And then we can start to identify trends of like how we can support schools systematically. Um, around some of these things. So that was just the one thing I was thinking. I know that's pretty big and like, um, maybe even amorphous because I haven't really been super clear. So I'm happy to clarify if you have any targeted questions to me.
So I will tell you that um, a- actually, when um, the, the state made the requirements that we start doing safety assessments, that's when my job was slightly different. And so our office actually is the office who developed the safety assessment and for the schools and this, and within it, it does have this whole thing about. So if you look at your school, you know, there are certain areas of your school that you should be assigning additional staff to supervise and stuff for a variety of reasons of things that could happen. And one of the questions in the safety evaluation has to do with, uh, do you assign additional staff to, like say stairwells are a, a perfect place that things, bad things can happen if you don't have adequate supervision. You know, stuff like that. So we can put something, I, well, I'm gonna go back and look at both the evaluation language and everything and see about putting some language in there that could um. Could address what, what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I would just want to echo, and I, I want to make sure I'm on time too. So Cindy, feel free to throw that timer up for me. I think I have like maybe no time, but just wanted to give my last comment, which is that. Um, we love that administrative piece too, where they can say like, here are tips, because I just feel like principals and teachers are so overwhelmed. They have so much going on. Um, so I don't want to put all of that in their lap, but I think that globally, you know, the administration can see and they can just kind of send out, you know. Pretty standard language of just like, here are some things you can do. It's not a huge lift on their end, um, to kind of pull that together throughout the year for those periods of times as reminders to schools.
Okay.
Um, are there other questions or comments on this? Okay, um, so please be advised that this policy will be returned to the next uh P and G committee for action. Any objections? Hearing none, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the policy, uh, the committee on policy two, zero, one, eight, safety programs. And um, have it brought back to the next P and G for action. So we're gonna move on to item uh, five point O, items for review or action. There are five items for review or action. Uh, each discussion round will last two and a half minutes. We're gonna move to item five point one, policy service animals in schools. Um, and the question is on advancing agenda item five point one, policy service animals in schools to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second? Colleagues, Dr. Miller, uh, Vice Chair Rivera Forbes. Chair McInnes Murray, any, is there a second?
Second.
Great. It's been moved in seconded. I will now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of the new policy.
Uh, excuse me, um, Chair Briggs, you know, I can't vote on this committee. I don't have a vote.
I keep forgetting. Thank you for.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Welsh.
So the uh service an- animals policy, um, this was, is one that was basically um, in accordance with federal and state anti-discrimination laws. Um, and it's addressing uh, ensuring that students, employees and third parties with disabilities have equal opportunity um, and equal access to workplaces and educational programs and activities. So it just, the, the policy itself uh, provides guidelines for permitting of the use of the, of the service animals by individuals with disabilities. On school-related and school-sponsored activities. Um, they are, except for two inquiries, uh, PGPS employees are not allowed to ask individuals with the service animals about the individual's disability. Uh, but they can ask if the animal is required because of a disability and what work or task the animal has been trained to perform. And the policy also states that PGPS employees may not require an individual with a disability to provide documentation about the service animal certification, training or licensure. And um, also we can't, the school system can't charge any kind of additional admission fees or requiring the purchase of separate tickets. Uh, for the admission of the service animal or the animal being trained or raised as a service animal. Um, they're not allowed to do that. And then lastly, the owner of the um, service animal is liable for any harm or injury caused by the service animal to students, employees and visitors on, on PGPS property. And it is their responsibility for the care and supervision of the su- uh, service animal. Um, it also just, there's another piece of the policy that, that does talk about the miniature horse and the fact that um. It talks about uh, making sure that um, where you would think unlikely to have a miniature horse in your school. This does require implementation of reasonable modifications to administrative procedures and practices to risk use of the reasonable horse. Um, if the, if it has been uh, individual, individually trained to do work or perform tasks for the benefit of the individual. Um, and I think that is basically it in the nutshell for this policy.
Thank you. That was great, Mrs. Welsh. Uh, pretty concise, which is appreciated. Uh, we've had a really good discussion about this one. Um, are there any objections to advancing the new policy to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. Um, the policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're now gonna move on to item five point two, policy zero, one, one, nine, theory of action. The question is on advancing uh, agenda item five point two. Policy zero, one, one, nine, theory of action to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Right. It's moved in seconded. I will now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy zero, one, one, nine.
So um, uh, policy zero, one, one, nine, theory of action, it's been a dry, excuse me, revised to address the commitment of the. Of the Board of Education to achieve equity and excellence in education. Um, by providing a framework that outlines the steps that uh Prince George's County schools must do in order to meet that outline. And it emphasized the importance of aligning uh, our actions with the core values of the twenty one to twenty, twenty, twenty one, twenty six. PGPS strategic plan by ensuring that the following evidence-based strategies are utilized. And that consists of. Development of rigorous, accessible, aligned and standard-based curriculum, continuous and relevant professional development for educators. Continuous cycle of data analysis, goal setting, action planning, execution and monitoring. Uh, development of an environment that fosters cultural responsiveness and collective responsibility for the success of all students. A focus on the twenty one, twenty six strategic plan, five strategic and imperative, strategic imperatives. Um, and then establishment of a critical success indicate of critical success indicators to monitor progress towards achieving. The outcome goal for the twenty one, twenty six um, strategic plan. And then finally, the implementation of the transparent data dashboards. So that is it in the nutshell for what this policy does address.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um, are there any objections to advancing policy zero, one, one, nine to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We'll now move on to item five point three, bylaw ninety two, ten, chair. The question is on advancing agenda item five point three, bylaw ninety two, ten, chair. To the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. I will now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of bylaw ninety two, ten.
So um, bylaw ninety two, ten, um, it's um, it has been revised, um, and it's mainly to reflect the changes that were made to. Education article three dash one, zero, zero, four, the education article um, by the passage of House Bill ten seventy nine in the last legislative session. by the passage of House Bill ten seventy nine in the last legislative session. And the bylaw includes the duties of the chair as mandated by three dash two thousand and four. And additionally, it addresses the following situations, the absence of the chair at a board meeting, the temporary unavailability of the chair and the vice chair, a vacancy in the office of the chair, and a vacancy in the office of the vice of the vice chair. So it's a pretty concise, and I think, you know, that's basically what it does address. So, I think that was it.
Yeah. Are there, okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Are there any objections to advancing bylaw ninety two ten to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, Mrs. Welsh, I do wanna add a comment here. I know we talked about a few changes. Just wanted to confirm, have any of those updates to the policy you've been made as far as duties versus responsibilities?
So that I will do before I send it forward. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it in the meeting first before making that change, because we didn't have that conversation in the committee.
Okay, I did wanna make a just a comment and Miss, Mr. Whitley, while you're here, to get your opinion on this. So a board member who remain anonymous had a recommendation about instead of having us to vote for a vice chair, which is in the policy right now, we would instead follow Roberts' rules and appoint a board member for each meeting until December as the vice chair. And I'm just curious to know, your expert opinion, like, is that, is that possible? Should we do that? You know, what are your thoughts on it?
The parliamentarian is actually the expert on Roberts' rules. But again, I believe that that is something that the board, again, I think it's within the realm of possibility if that's how the board wanted to handle the issue with there not being a vice chair at any point in time.
Okay, so legally, we would be within the bounds of we have the ability to do that, as long as, once we speak with the parliamentarian, any clarity, that's possible. Okay.
Exactly. And I did have a question. Robin, has the Office of General Counsel had an opportunity to review this this policy and has it given final approval for it moving forward?
It has. But, but, I mean, at this point, this is a pretty clear-cut policy. It's really just talking about if you have a, if you have a vacancy, how would you handle that in terms of operating as a school system? And I, I do know like ten seventy nine does address, I think, voting for those positions. But we do have language in the beginning that talks about voting for both those positions. So I, I think Board Member Chair, you're talking about, you're talking about the vice chair, correct? They would assume they would be picking each meeting.
So, I know we talked about that, and I know that you, Robin, I know you also looked into the, that piece around Roberts' rules. So what I wanna do is, we can move it forward, but I do want to, I just wanna mention that I do have like concerns, there are board members that have concerns about how we'll move forward and flag that. And then there'll likely be a discussion we'll have on the floor. But that was the one who objected, so hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We will move to item five point four, bylaw ninety two seventy one, student board member. The question is on advancing agenda item five point four, bylaw ninety two seventy one, student board member to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second? Great, it's been moved in seconded. I will now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of bylaw ninety two seventy one.
And I'm sorry to take you back one second, but in terms of the chair, what I wanna make sure I'm clear about is the part where it says the vice chair will assume the responsibilities. You're asking to have that changed to duties, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that before it moves on to the, to the board. I apologize. Okay. For the student board member, so that one, this, this has been, again, revised to reflect the changes that were made to education article three dash one zero zero two and three dash one zero zero four of the education article by the passage of House Bill ten seventy nine during the twenty twenty three legislative session. And basically, the bylaw includes the following requirements, election, has information about the student, the election of student board member, the terms of service by the student board member, the rights and privileges of the student board member, the professional development for the student board member, the attendance of conferences by the student board member, and, and then a college scholarship for the student board member. And then the bio also addresses the reimbursement of travel and other expenses for an adult chaperone to transport and accompany the student board member to out-of-town conferences, as well as local mileage-based reimbursements for traveling to board meetings and board-related school events. And then, and then it does talk about the, uh, carrying a certain amount of money for the college scholarship for the student board member. Now, when we left this, this policy or bylaw at the last meeting, there was conversation related around the whole issue of the scholarship. And as, as I looked at, did some research, could you said, we're just gonna do research and find out how this works. So I did talk to, I did talk to our budget office and the, well, finance and then the budget office and treasury. And of course, we've never done this before because it was the county government who did this scholarship previously. And so the question that came up is, where does the money sit? And of course, our finance office said they didn't think that, like, so the county government, I think, offered a five thousand dollar scholarship annually for four years, I think it was, with, and I talked to Averro about this, with, in, and being able to show need was the factor also, the financial need to be able to get the scholarship. So that's why we never had addressed it previously, because it, because it wasn't us that was providing the funding, it was the county government. But this, the, the chief of finance said that there is no real money, money available in the board's budget. And as far as the superintendent, there might be some language that they could find some money, some, I mean, there's might be some leeway somewhere that they might be able to find some money to be able to fund the scholarship. So I also checked with the foundation, because our foundation actually is in the business of getting money to fund scholarships. And so I talked to Thea Wilson, who's in charge of it. And she said that if, in fact, this board was looking at getting outside funds to fund that, fund the scholarships needed to be a fund scholarship, then what would happen is the school board would need to go to the board of the foundation and present this to the board. And if the board approved it, then they would go ahead and they would you know, do what they do to get money to fund a scholarship, and they could be the source that would fund the scholarship. So I didn't know to what degree, how much you wanna incorporate into the policy, into the bylaw. There, right now, it's a very, it's a pretty, like, there's not a lot of language there. It's basically saying that there will be a scholarship, that this, the, the board and the superintendent collaboratively will work together to provide a scholarship, but it doesn't provide any amount of money or anything like that. So I didn't, I, I don't know how you wanna proceed in that regard, especially since there's no actual source of funding within the budget, the school system's budget, but the foundation could be a possibility, but it would require the, the board to reach out to the board of the foundation and provide them, you know, the information to see if the foundation would be willing to do that.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Mrs. Welsh. I'm gonna recognize Vice Chair Rivera Forbes before we check for any objections. So Vice Chair Rivera Forbes.
Thank you, Chair Briggs. Thank you, Ms. Welsh, for getting the background check and clarity. I am so appreciative because as a student board member, I am a large advocate of just making sure we have some support as we go into our next education after high school, especially with our long-year dedication of service and being the only board member that is not compensated at all. So I am very appreciative that you looked out for this. A big reason why I did bring this up was because in the application that we all get, all PGTPS students that are interested in writing for small have access to, it does say that a scholarship is awarded to student board members. So that's something else I wanna put out there, just that future now, and I'm not saying, like, it, this is probably from the county council in the past, but it is something that I guess with, people are taking into consideration when they are applying for this position. So I'm gonna talk with the advisor who does work on making those applications, so we could put more clarity around that as well. But I just wanted to put that out there in case, you know, next mobs in a couple of years mention it as well. And again, like I said, I'm very grateful for you taking time to look into this. I'm hoping that this is something that we can make official, like other counties that do grant their student member of the board scholarships. And just ensuring, like I said, we are taken care of in our next couple of years in our journey.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair Rivera Forbes, Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you. Maybe I'm misunderstanding something. Ms. Welsh, have we given scholarships in the past to the student board members?
No.
Prince George's says never?
Not the school system, but the, the county council did.
So all these years, okay, so we need to get something in a law or something to, for this to happen in Prince George's County?
No, I don't think so. I think it's just, I think it's, I think, when we addressed this policy initially, I think the members of the committee said, instead of having the county do it, we'll do it, and we'll do it in collaboration with the superintendent. So that's how this language has been put there.
Okay, so then my next question is, as we budget, because we reconcile the budget in June, is it that we add this five thousand dollars to the, the board office budget? How, what's the recommendation of how to make this happen?
Well, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're not gonna go the route of getting the foundation to pursue, I mean, because they're pretty good at getting grants, if not, I mean, grant scholarships. If not, if you're not gonna go through that route, then it would be, you would have to allot a certain amount of money in the budget somewhere to be able to support this. And you also, and the other thing, it just so you know, the committee has not ever designated an amount, so we don't even know what that amount would be. So that's been kept blank all this time.
Okay, so the five thousand figure was just something somebody threw out there, and forgive me, because I have not read the, the document. I guess what I'm looking for is how to solidify this within this board, so that it withstands the test of time. And I think personally to this committee, the best way to do that is to put it in a board budget. So that's just food for thought as you move forward. Okay, thank you, Ms. Welsh.
Can I ask one question, though? Is that, so I agree with you. I think that if, if, if everyone's sincere about this, it should probably be a budget item. But I don't know what, I mean, is that something the board pursues with the, with the administration? And what is the process so that we, we don't lose sight of this? I don't know.
Look, I have no idea, but Revel is on this phone call today. Now, I'm suggesting to him, when he has a conversation with his supervisor, he raises it there and we start this process. And thank you, my time is up. But we need to start the process to solidify this going forward.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair Mickens Murray. And maybe one recommendation Robin and I have, is I know we have a PNG committee meeting next week. Perhaps you can report out and reach out to a peer in a neighboring county. I think that the student member said that Montgomery County has done this. So they may have some wisdom on how they went about doing that in the past, and just so that we can kind of, you know, get a shortcut as opposed to trying to and then we can just go from there. But I think the policy is still, unless there's any objections, we can move forward with seeking public comment. But yeah, you can just get the, you know, su- support there. So are there any objections to advancing bylaw ninety two seventy one to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're gonna move on to item five point five, policy eighty three seventy one, appointments. The question is on advancing agenda item five point five, policy eighty seven thirty one, appointments to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, it's moved in seconded. I will now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy eighty three seventy one. Mrs. Welsh?
So the recommendation is to rescind the policy eighty three seventy one, and the reason being is because we have policy four one one two, which is appointment of personnel, and it provides direction for a comprehensive and equitable process for the appointment of Prince George's County Public School personnel. So policy eighty three seventy one is really pretty, it's almost identical, and it's really redundant. And so there's no need to have two policies saying the same thing, and since we already have four one one two, it would make sense to rescind eighty three seventy one.
Great. Okay, are there any objections to advancing, I'm sorry, yeah, are there any objections to advancing policy eighty three seventy one to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment, as a, and of course, we're going to rescind this policy? Hearing none, the motion passes. Of course, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement of your recommendation and suggestion. And the policy will move to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment.
I think Dr. Miller's trying to say something. I don't know that for sure, but you're on mute, Dr. Miller. If you're trying to say something. I see her, I see her.
Yeah, she's occasionally come off. Dr. Miller, do you wanna be recognized? If you are, it looks like you're trying to hit a button.
No, she's gone.
Yeah.
There she is.
That's her screenshot. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask to unmute you, Dr. Miller.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Dr. Miller. Can you? We can hear you, Dr. Miller.
Can you hear me, Mr. Briggs?
Yes, we can hear you.
Were you asking me something?
We were asking you if you had a comment to, about this specific policy, policy eighty three seventy one appointments.
No, no comment.
Oh, all right, well, we did all of that. Either way, we're gonna move forward here unless, Mrs. Welsh, you have any questions?
Nope, I don't.
All right, we're gonna move to item six point O, committee recommendations, new business slash governance. We're gonna move to item six point one, policy zero one two five, non-discrimination. And item six point two, policy twenty six hundred records and documents management program. On March twenty one, two thousand twenty four, the full board voted and approved policy zero one two five, non-discrimination and twenty six hundred records and documents management program for public comment before adoption. No public comments were received from the general public. The question is on advancing agenda item six point one, policy zero one two five, and agenda item six point two, policy twenty six hundred to the full board with the recommendation for first reader. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policies will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced to first reader. We're now gonna move on to item seven point O, follow-ups and next steps. Item seven point one, its follow-ups and follow-ups from the meetings will be addressed at the next planned policy and governance committee meeting. Item seven point two, next steps. The next step, the next policy and governance meeting will be held on Tuesday, May seventh, Cindy, is this correct? May seventh, two thousand twenty four, I believe we should have one next week.
Yeah, remember, we pushed everything down, one.
Oh, I see, okay, so that's correct.
Yeah, to give administration enough time to get the policies together.
Okay, so the next policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, May seventh, at five P M. This meeting will be virtual. Please continue to check the PGTPS board webpage for more information. We're now gonna move to close, item eight point O, closing remarks from the chair and adjournment. Item eight point one, closing remarks and adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for your great meeting this evening and the meaningful discussions that we've had about our board policies. The question is on adjourning the April twenty third, two thousand twenty three, policy and governance committee meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the time is now seven oh three P M. The April twenty third policy and governance meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night, everybody.